Commissioner Shear.
Here.
Commissioner Mickelson.
Here.
Commissioner Moore. Commissioner O’Field.
Here.
Commissioner Capitelli.
Here.
Commissioner Twue.
Here.
And Chair Ghosh.
Here.
And Commissioner Sanderson.
Here. We’re waiting for you. We’re going to go into land acknowledgement. Anybody have any comments on that?
Oh, I don’t. Yeah, please. I actually object to land acknowledgements for the same reason I object to the flood of allegiance, but that doesn’t mean we can’t talk about this subject. And I just want to say what a joyful experience it was to be at the rematriation of the Shell Mount site last Sunday and to see people of the Lejean tribes dancing on land, not in protest, but because it was there. And I have goosebumps right now just talking about that. It was a really lovely thing. And I just want to say that I know a lot of us are deeply concerned about housing. There was an element of this, but we have a lot of sites for housing, and I’m confident that we’re going to get there. And we couldn’t, in my opinion, finish the job of excluding indigenous people from their land for that reason. So I hope many of you were there and got enjoyed. It was a really lovely thing and a very different feeling to see people. And I’m excited for future generations to get to enjoy that, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Mickelson. I just want to add to that. I couldn’t be there, but I think what’s exciting is it is being documented pretty well. I think there was at least one short film that I saw that hadn’t yet been released that’s being done by the Sacred Land Film Project, which I think is a work title project. And so they had like a five-minute short about the struggle to get there. And I also saw that somebody else is doing a longer sort of documentary. And when we watched it, we were actually with the Goldman Prize winner, who was from India, who was here. We couldn’t tell anybody they had won the prize yet, but we were in the same room with Karina and everybody sort of watching the first cut of this film and witnessing this incredible moment of the Goldman Prize winners who are working on indigenous rights in India related to mining and putting their lives at risk to be able to see some of this joy of an indigenous community here with the Shell Mount. So thank you for bringing that up. I, it’s not on, I don’t know where to do this, but I do want to welcome the commissioners who are alternates today, who are subbing. Beautiful day outside, and so I’m grateful for anybody who’s here in this room with us, but especially for you all for stepping in when it was needed. So welcome, Lori, Debbie. You’ve been with us before. Lori, you’ve been with us before. David, you’re new. We don’t really have time to go into intros, but I hope you understand. So moving forward with the order of the agenda, we have two action items. And one of them is meatier than the others, so I would not suggest changing that order, but if anybody has a comment or could. We don’t have to, do we have to? I can’t remember if we have to vote on it or not. Okay? If there’s no comments, we move forward. To public comment on items that are not on the agenda. So if you’re here to comment on anything that we’re not discussing today, this is the moment to do it, and you’ll have two minutes. And if you’re here to discuss any of the other action items, we will have time then. Going once, going twice. Okay. Staff report.
The only updates that I probably have for you are on the disposition of some items that you have recently considered. On July 9th, the City Council finalized a second reading of the demolition ordinance. And this upcoming Tuesday, July 23rd, the City Council will be considering your recommendation on the middle housing zoning service. We do not have a meeting in office.
And this is September 4th meeting, is it? After Labor Day?
Yes.
Do better about meetings after long weekends. If anybody here, and I’m interviewing something, you can communicate with folks. If you cannot make it for any reason to that meeting, please let your council members know in advance so we can plan for the meeting. And let Justin know if you can make it, so we make sure we have time. That’s my only concern with that September 4th meeting. The chair is out today. I don’t have a report, so we’re moving on. I don’t think we have any active committees. Any liaisons have any reports? So we move to approval of minutes. From the last meeting, somebody want to move or have comments?
I have a comment. The minutes are too thin. I couldn’t tell what transpired in the last meeting. There was no action item. There should at least be a basic statement about the gist of the comments. It should, you can’t just check a box and say, oh, we did minutes. It should actually tell somebody something about what transpired. So I’m hoping you can not go crazy, but include a little more information in what transpired in a meeting. And with that, I’ll move to approve.
I’ll say it.
And I, I’ll just, any discussion, but I would say, yeah, I felt that too when I looked at the minutes. The TIC does a good job, I think, of balancing content with action. So I don’t know if there’s a way for you all to do that without adding a lot more to staff time. I mean, we have a video recording now, but generally we don’t. So it’s very hard if somebody missed a meeting to know what the conversation was. I can forward you one of the TIC meeting notes to see if that’s helpful.
Yeah, that would be great. We certainly do want, we do want to be able to have the minutes.
Yeah.
The practice is to have action minutes only.
Right.
But we should be able to provide some sort of content.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it’s one of those things where, you know, I think that we are reluctant to maybe be perceived as editorializing by saying that these were the things that we discussed and one person mentioned it, so we put it in. Is that the same as four people? But I think there’s probably a little bit more that we can do than just saying the discussion occurred.
Yeah.
So we will work on it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we need to do a roll still?
Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner Shear?
I abstain.
Commissioner O’Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Mickelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Capitelli?
I abstain.
Commissioner Twue?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Abstain.
Chair Ghosh?
Yes.
Okay. I guess future agenda items and other planning-related events. Do you have anything? Because you can also do that with the planning staff report, but I think this is also for other people if they have any events. But do you all have any?
This is for the commissioners.
Oh, this is all. Okay. Commissioner. Seeing none. Moving on to our agenda items, action items. First one is the public hearing on the state law technical edits 2024, and Robert Poole is with us today. We do this annually, and you can explain more of the context, but it should be pretty straightforward.
Yeah, we’ve been doing it annually, now more regularly. Regularly. So good evening, commissioners. My name is Robert Vera. I’m a senior planner with the planning commission. Tonight’s planning commission will consider zoning ordinance amendments that conform the state law relating to electric vehicle charging and non-subjective technical edits and corrections. Before I summarize the proposed ordinance, I’d like to briefly go over the background for staff’s proposal. On October 12th, 2021, council adopted ordinance number 7787, which replaced Title 23 of the Berkeley Municipal Code and adopted a new Title 23 to make this fee zoning ordinance easier to understand and administer. City council gave staff direction to make minor changes to comply with state law and to regularly return to planning commission city council with necessary amendments to maintain the integrity of the zoning code. The proposed zoning amendments are routine and required for compliance with recently adopted state laws and include corrections, clarifications, and technical edits, ensure consistency throughout the zoning ordinance. So moving on to state law, AV 1236 and AV 970 require all cities to approve applications to install electric vehicle charging stations through the issuance of a building permit and prohibit zoning review for EV charging stations. Proposed changes update lot and land use table to remove EV charging stations and then update the glossary definition to clarify that no zoning review is needed. Also, staff are proposing additional amendments which are related to the city’s effort to update and maintain the Berkeley Municipal Code to make the zoning ordinance easier to understand. The proposed non-subjective amendments correct mistakes and errors identified by the public, staff, or the zoning officer as inconsistent, incorrect, outdated, or in need of further clarification. Staff reviews the inconsistencies and then proposes the zoning ordinance amendments. Table 1 in the staff report summarizes all the proposed changes and their corresponding ordinance sections. These technical edits fall mainly into three buckets regardless of which policy section is being updated. The first is corrections. Many of the technical edits correct errors. These errors are mainly grammatical, GIs-related, transmittal errors from shifting the old BMC to the new BMC, or as a result of new recently adopted zoning amendments. The second bucket is updates. These technical edits update reference sections that have changed due to recently adopted zoning amendments or new organizations of the California Government Code. And then the last bucket is clarification. These updates include more specific language of existing practices and procedures to make the zoning code easier to understand and administer. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommends city council to approve the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. And this concludes staff’s presentation.
I have a question on the electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging station law. I’m really glad we’re making it easier for people to get these because obviously there is huge demand, but I’m just wondering, can we as a city impose any kind of design standards at all, even if it’s not going through like a big public hearing? But like, for example, if my neighbor wanted to put up a charging station with like a big Tesla logo on it or something like that, like could we as a city have a policy that says like, no, it has to conform to like this, that, or the other kind of uniform design? Or is it, is the state law just like, no, like you have to allow it no matter what? Like what level of discretion is allowed?
EV charging stations as defined in the glossary definition wouldn’t be, wouldn’t go through the zoning review, but for example, the example you were saying would be regulated under signage or if there was a giant EV sign lit up or something next to some residential portion. But as it is, it would be more regulated under the building code in terms of the specific voltage and requirements of where they place the charging towers, but it wouldn’t be regulated through the zoning.
Yeah, and just for folks right here, we’re going to just do some clarifying questions and then we’ll, this is a public hearing, so we’ll go to the public for any comments to vote to close the hearing, and then we can do our more discussion and recommendations.
Clarify question is, objective design standards, the standard for what could be imposed?
Yeah, any design standards need to be objective design standards if that was related to place then or, you know, signage or something like that.
All right. Assume based on your previous response that rules around like the specific place. Chargers are not going to obstruct a, like a public right of way, like a sidewalk or a street. It’ll have to, it’s on people’s individual property.
Correct, yeah.
And I think these questions are fine, but they’re not, I mean, yeah. They don’t, they don’t exactly fit in with this agenda, which is that what Robert is doing is taking state law and making sure our zoning reflects state laws where we’re in compliance. So if you wanted to have more substantive discussion about what this looks like, that would be at a different time. Is that?
Two questions. By the way, I think it’s okay to ask a peripheral question. I agree with you that to do anything about it, we have to date a separate time, but while we’re on the topic, it’s okay to widen the envelope a little bit. First question is about noticing. You said that noticing would be retained. I’m an advocate for a while that we actually reduce the door knocking and signature sewiness, which was established pre-internet. So when you say noticing will be required for 80 years, what do you mean?
One second, let me find the specific section. I believe we’re, we’re, that’s. Sure, sure.
So the city of Berkeley received a letter from Housing and Community Development Department of the State of California with a number of questions about our ADU regulations. Some of them are issues we disagree with, that we are going to engage the city council in talking about. A few of them are changes that we are amenable to making. One of them is that they indicated that state law, that the way that we have it stated in the code, the neighbor, the notification requirement for ADUs is characterized as an application submission requirement. State law prohibits adding additional application submittal requirements to the ADU process. So we just took that out because actually it’s the city that does the notice. It’s a city function. The notice will continue to occur. We just removed it as something that the applicant has to show because the city told us that we can’t add, we can’t create that obstacle to ADU construction.
That is good news. Second question is about number 15, parking design and layout. And you said clarifying that off-street parking can be in any configuration. Do you mean any location and not configuration? Because the engineering department has configuration requirements for what constitutes a parking space, and I assume those still apply. So I’m wondering if location is the correct word.
What is? Yeah. Can you answer that? Page 13. The state law says that a parking space for accessory dwelling, you place it in any setback area, so you can’t exclude it from side yard where you are, front yard on the setbacks. So if that’s what any location is, there aren’t areas that are excluded on the parcel from placing a parking space.
I think, I think we’re meaning location.
Yeah.
Open to, to changing to locations and configuration.
So we’ll open it up for public comment. If you’re here to comment on the state law edits, now’s the time. Don’t see anyone. Don’t hear anyone. Okay. I guess we have to move to close the public hearing. Somebody want to move to close the public hearing? Commissioner Mickelson seconded by Commissioner Twue.
Motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
Commissioner O’Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Mickelson?
Yep.
Commissioner Capitelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Twue?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Yes.
Chair Ghosh?
Yes.
Motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Two comments. First is on item one, on lot coverage. I don’t know if you have any discretion in this area, but if these words were generated with some level of interpretation, then I’d encourage you to consider not including trellises and pergolas in lot coverage. To me, lot coverage is anything that’s roofed. So, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that. If we have this road and nobody would ever go to another pergola or truck.
Right. And people, we’re going to need more and more shade. Second comment, I thought it was funny in number 12 that we’re allowing outdoor cafes but not bars in Mewee. We cannot fix that tonight, but I just thought I’d point it out that it’s sort of funny to allow outdoor dining but no outdoor, no indoor restaurant. That’s funny.
Steph? Steph, did you have any response to the, like where number three, the pergola came from?
This is, this is codifying existing practice. That’s what’s being counted toward lot coverage now, and it was included to make it more clear during the process of what’s being considered as lot coverage now.
So you, what, so what you’re saying is that this is how staff has been calculating lot coverage?
Correct, yeah.
Now?
So you need a permanent pergola facility, I mean, built, not just a temporary coverage that can be removed.
Yeah, these are building structures that are, with a building permit, that are covered.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I’m going to make a motion to approve this with first agreement from the planning commission that you bring to council, a way of excluding pergolas and trellises from lot coverage, and that we fix item 15 and change the word from configuration to location.
Second. Steph, did you capture the motion?
Yes.
So. Sorry, what?
Just.
You have a motion in a second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, and then when you’re, if you’re ready to take the vote, you can inform me and I’ll.
How do I do a friendly amendment? Just say you want to. I want to do a friendly amendment and to take the pergola out of your motion. And the reason is, we always, in Berkeley, if it’s a permanent structure that’s covering your green area, it’s more than 30 inches, then that’s part of lot coverage. So I think that removing it from this definition is going to conflict with other parts of the code. So it is, you know, it’s area that’s under a permanent structure that you can’t build it unless you remove that structure. So someone might remove that structure to reduce this lot coverage and build a parcel that’s within the 40% of the lot coverage. So I’m not sure what pergola means. I mean, I guess it means a shade structure.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so it’s not a trellis or something like that.
They’re kind of the same.
Tre, you may be suggesting to distribute pergola or pergola in trellis?
The trellis isn’t occupied.
Trellis and pergola, I mean, maybe staff can tell us what your definition of pergola is.
Okay, let me, I can fix it easily. To ask staff to, I mean, to ask council for a referral to eliminate unroofed structures from lot coverage in residential districts.
Unroofed, you mean?
Unroofed.
Solid roofed.
So like the thing that’s at the rose garden, you know, if you, if I put a trellis outside my window to cast shade and reduce solar gain, that’s not lot coverage?
No, I, I am agreeing with you. I’m just trying to get to the, to reduce, I mean, the whole reason for doing this is to reduce confusion, right? So now we have confusion about what is a pergola? What is a trellis? What is uncovered? Because I’ve designed pergolas and trellises with like some kind of roofing material on top. It’s still a pergola, you know? So I think that’s not enough, enough direction. I think what we’re trying to say is something without walls, honestly.
Well, let’s go, let’s go with Denver’s friendly amendment.
So, yeah, if we just do the location but not address the other one.
We’re not going to address the other one. I’ll find another way.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it because I think we’re just opening up something. So do you accept the?
That’s fine.
So what we’re saying is moving forward with this and changing the word configuration to location with the ADU wording.
So I believe what the word that you used, as you were making it, was that staff would bring this to council. Do you want to maybe clear it up and say, make these changes? Or are you recommending?
Oh, that was for the pergola issue. I think we should just change the word configuration to location.
Yeah.
To be clear, so we’re taking the referral part? Taking it out? Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I mean, let’s vote with this.
I would like to ask, why don’t you reback the motion?
The motion is to change the word for parking configuration to location and striking the recommendation to remove pergola or anything like that. So just changing the verbiage from configuration to location.
Correct.
Okay, I’ll take the roll. Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner O’Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Mickelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Capitelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Twue?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Yes.
And Chair Ghosh?
Yes.
And Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
And can we put Robert on your list sort of looking at this issue that was just brought up today for the next time you make changes? Because I think there is some confusion there about definitions and the impact on lot coverage and how people will design. So I think it’s something worth looking into and add it to your next sort of round of edits to figure out what the process is, to simplify that.
Sure.
Honestly, I wouldn’t know how to read that. Okay. Moving on to our next agenda item. And thank you, Robert, for this work. And we talked about how challenging it can be to make sure everything is aligned. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Okay. So we're moving on to our next agenda item, which is proposed zoning ordinance amendments. And this is a continuation of a longer process that. When was the last time we had a presentation on it?
On your May meeting.
At our May meeting, okay. So the referral from council is from 2022. So we'll do the same thing. This is also a public hearing, so we'll hear presentations from staff. We will ask clarifying questions, who open it up to members of the public. You'll have two minutes if you're an individual. You'll have three minutes if you're representing an organization. Please tell us who you're representing. We don't cede time at planning commission meetings. So whenever you're ready, I will let you know and you can line up at the mic. And that's where I will do public comment from. Then we'll bring it back here for discussion and any recommendations that we're making tonight.
Okay, Chair Ghosh, members of the Planning Commission, Justin Horner, Planning Department staff. Tonight, we're bringing forward zoning ordinance amendments consistent with the keep innovation in Berkeley referral from the city council. Just to provide a little background on the proposed ordinance amendments, in 2022, the city council referred staff and the planning commission to adopt certain zoning changes to encourage research and development uses in Berkeley, particularly in proximity to the UC Berkeley campus. At your May meeting, Office of Economic Development and Planning staff provided a presentation on some suggested policy direction. They summarized the outreach they conducted to local stakeholders on the issue, a review of the policies of surrounding jurisdictions, and provided a rationale for a set of policy recommendations. The Planning Commission provided feedback on the proposed policies and directed staff to return to the Planning Commission with specific zoning ordinance amendments. So tonight's staff is requesting that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing, take public comments, and make a recommendation to the city council on the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. The five areas that I will discuss tonight and which are included in your staff report include the changes indicated on the slide. These include revising permit requirements for R and D uses, adding R and D to the district purpose statements in two manufacturing districts, removing the regulation of biological safety level from the zoning code, revising parking requirements, and revising the definition of laboratory. In the last case, the definition of laboratory, new information has been brought to staff's attention and we have changed our recommendation on this particular item. And I'll outline that when the slide comes up. The first proposed change would revise permit requirements for R and D uses in the CW, CT, CC, CDMU, CU, and CNS zoning districts, which are indicated in color on the slide. Currently, R and D uses are permitted in the zoning districts with an administrative use permit with additional findings. The proposed changes would permit R and D uses that are under 20,000 square feet with a zoning certificate and R and D uses that are over 20,000 square feet with an AUP. It should be noted that in the CW district along San Pablo Avenue, there are six specific nodes that exist to encourage neighborhood-serving commercial uses on the ground floor. R and D uses are currently not permitted on the ground floor in those areas, and these proposed changes would not change that prohibition. The proposed changes only apply in areas where R and D is currently permitted with an AUP with the existing findings. The second change includes adding research and development into the purpose statements for the mixed manufacturing and for the mixed-use light industrial district purposes. This would clarify that research and development uses are encouraged in these areas, assist the zoning adjustments board in making required findings for administrative use permits, and would add certainty for potential applicants considering R and D uses in these districts. The third change would remove the regulation of biological safety level class organisms within the Berkeley municipal code. The provision on the slide is the only place in the Berkeley municipal code where BSL class organisms are mentioned. Sorry for the blurry slide, but as was discussed at your May meeting, potential businesses that are interested in biological research are already subject to a wide range of regulations from a variety of public agencies. The blurry, albeit blurry chart on the slide, is an example worksheet from an existing biosciences business which summarizes the variety of public agencies that must be consulted or from which approvals are required to be obtained to operate their businesses. These include regional governmental agencies, such as the Air Quality Management District, state-level entities, such as the Department of Toxic Substance Control, and local agencies, such as the Berkeley Fire Department and our own Toxic Management Division, which is also responsible for periodic inspection of approved lab uses. Given that biological research businesses are already subject to a variety of regulations from other public agencies, and given the planning and development staff do not have any unique training in the evaluation of biological organisms, the proposed ordinance amendments include striking this provision from the Mulee zoning district standards. The proposed changes also include a revision to the glossary that removes the definitions of class organisms as they are not mentioned anywhere else in the Berkeley municipal code. The fourth change relates to reducing parking requirements for R and D uses as outlined in the slide. As was discussed at your May meeting, some R and D uses have been discouraged from establishing themselves in Berkeley due to parking requirements. In an effort to make it slightly more advantageous for R and D uses, the parking requirements have been reduced, as shown in the slide. We should note that due to recent state law, the Berkeley municipal code already prohibits the establishment of minimum parking requirements for most commercial uses that are located within a half a mile of high-frequency transit. This slide covers, this slide indicates the areas of the city that are not within a half mile of high-frequency transit. So the highlighted areas would be the areas that would be subject to the new parking standards. Most of these areas, R and D would not be permitted in the first place. So in the overwhelming majority of the city and in the areas being considered for R and D permit changes, we can't establish minimum parking requirements any way as you just stated. The final item that was included in the staff report was a revision to the definition of a commercial, physical, or biological laboratory. You may recall that a proposed research laboratory could currently be classified as either a commercial, physical, or biological lab use or as a research and development use. This could cause some confusion as each of these uses has different permit requirements in some zones. So there could be confusion about whether a proposal is allowed. In an effort to further clarify our code and to make sure that we have mutually exclusive definitions of land uses in our glossary, we propose the revisions included in the slide to limit laboratory uses to testing laboratories only. Research laboratories would be classified as research and development moving forward. However, due to new information received and shared with the Planning Commission in supplemental one, we would like to revise our recommendation. As was noted in supplemental one, changing the definition as recommended by staff could negatively affect existing longstanding Berkeley businesses that had R and D-type uses approved under the existing laboratory definition. Many of these uses have existed in Berkeley since before the R and D definition was even established. There is concern that revising the definition in this way to exclude research labs could result in existing research lab uses being non-conforming. Accordingly, staff recommends that the Planning Commission move forward with the revised definition as shown in the slide, while also adding specific direction for staff to resolve the definitional issue for existing permitted uses before this revised definition is presented to the city council. Staff is confident that we can resolve this issue. There are a number of potential options to do so, including adding new language to this definition or through a memo or action from the zoning officer. Our position is that the concern about ongoing operations of existing compliant businesses is a real concern and that there should be no disadvantage to those businesses that results from this revision of this definition. And that the issue should be addressed to existing businesses' satisfaction before presenting the revised definition to city council. However, given the lengthy process to introduce zoning ordinance amendments, we do ask that the Planning Commission recommend this proposed revision to make sure it is available when we do go to council and when we do resolve this issue, as opposed to trying to take up this small item as a single standalone item at a later time. With that, staff recommends again that you hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance changes and make a recommendation to the city council on proposed ordinance amendments. Thank you very much, and I am joined by my colleague from Economic Development, Eleanor Hollander. If you have any questions for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? Quick, Commissioner.
I'd like to get clarity on the relationship between R and D and the proposed change on the definition of labs. So that just changes. So that definition that we're including, maybe modified, says that those are the only kinds of, there were two there, only kinds of laboratories. There were testing laboratories and then there was the marijuana testing.
Correct.
Were the only two that remained.
Correct.
So does that mean that when you look at research and development and you have some kind of laboratory that's not a testing laboratory, that it's not allowed?
No, the R and D, the R and D definition includes a research laboratory. The problem that this is solving is if, let's say, I'm somebody that has a research laboratory and I want to do it. And I look at the Berkeley municipal code and in one place, the R and D section says, research laboratory. And in this definition, it also says, a laboratory for technological research. So which one of these am I? And that wouldn't be such a problem if the permit requirements for both were the same. But in fact, the permit requirements for this type of laboratory seen in the slide are actually higher for R and D. So there's a concern that since we have a single use that could fit into either one, that we're discouraging R and D uses because they look at this higher permit requirement and say, oh, my gosh, I don't want to go through all of that. Also, in general, as a general principle, we want to make sure that each proposed use can only fit into one use type, just to remove confusion in general. So in this case, what we're saying here is that we would remove research and experiment and limit this to a testing laboratory. Usually, the thing people think of with this is like a blood testing place where stuff is collected and then you test it and measure it on site. And so research and experiments, they would go to the R and D definition. That would be the only place that would say research laboratory. So it would be clear what kind of land use type they are.
So this is just clarifying the allowed use that's for a laboratory that's in there now that maybe wasn't as clear as you.
Right, just eliminating the ambiguity of having research and experiment laboratory in two different land use types.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Question.
Sorry. Go ahead and.
So whether it's this kind of laboratory or whether it's the new research and development use, how do those uses sync up with the different categories of business license tax categories? Like, I was wondering about this because part of the premise, I think, in some of the materials for this proposal is like we want to increase the tax base. So I was looking at how different kinds of businesses are taxed. And for my business, when I go to renew my business license, it's like really straightforward which category I fall into. There's like a professional services category. So my law office like clearly falls into that category. But I realized based on like how these definitions work and other zoning code definitions, like it's not clear to me actually, like what tax category do research and development facilities fall into? And has the economic development office done any? Do you have any data on like what, like how do you, how would a typical research and development facility, kind of a situation be taxed? Would it be one of the categories that's taxed based on gross receipts? Would it be one of the other categories?
Yeah, I should not know the answer.
Good evening, commissioners. It's nice to be with you. I'm Eleanor Hollander. I'm the manager of the Office of Economic Development. I did want to say before I answer that question, last time it was before you all this item on May 1st, I shared with you all the zoning for Berkeley business work that we all did together. Got an award of excellence from the Northern California Planning Chapter of American Planning Association in the economic development and planning category. And I mentioned we are eligible to go to the state. And I'm happy to share with you all tonight that we did win the state award from the American Planning Association for the zoning for Berkeley business. So that's an award of excellence for late September that we are pleased to accept. So with that happy bit of news, I will answer your question about the business license tax. Research and development, you know, like use cases when you go and do your business license, like you were saying, you're at law office, you look it up, it's based on, some are based on gross receipts, some are based on sales, but it mostly goes receipts. What we have found is there is a category, research and development. And often, researchers that are undertaking research and development-type businesses are the recipients of a lot of grants sometimes for scientific research and other things. And so we've done some work to exempt the first, if they've gotten a grant to do their research, they're not taxed on that. So that's an example, it's gross receipts. But if it's for research activities that are educational purposes, we try not to charge your business license more for that. Does that make sense?
So it's based on gross receipts, but a research and development facility might be able to subtract grants up to a certain amount from their gross receipts.
That's right. So somebody that is actually taking in no money but received a grant of substantial, you know, proportion to do scientific research and development, we don't want to tax them on that award.
Right, so if I understand correctly, let's say my business is research and development. I don't do any sales because I don't have a viable product for market yet. But I just got some grants because I'm researching something that may be very interesting or promising. So potentially, this business might be exempt from all or most business taxes if it's sole or main source of funding is grants.
That's right. I think though, if your question's related to this topic exactly, like, R and D is the umbrella term and you can have a lab underneath that. So like Justin's saying, like, if you came in as a straight-up laboratory, you would see yourself in the R and D definition and apply that way. So there isn't somebody coming to the business license office saying, I'm opening a lab. Like, how do I get a business license to do the lab?
Right, they would be under this broad research and development category in the tax code.
Yeah. And then they could be eligible for these things, like the waivers for awards and grants.
Okay, that's helpful.
It's beneficial for the research organization.
There was a statement in the staff report saying, we want this because of tax revenue. But it sounds like unless a lab has a product on the market, there really isn't tax revenue.
Can I maybe reframe the question a little bit? To ask, what do you see as the economic benefit of this map? Of which parts are being affected? You said the colored parts. Can you repeat what you said about ground floor uses? Where it would, it would be ground floor and where it wouldn't?
So. Oh, it does, okay. So in the CW district, which is along San Pablo, there are six nodes around University, around Gilman, around Dwight, around Cedar and Ashby. At these nodes, there are regulations that limit what's permitted on the ground floor. The reason for that is because the ground floor uses we want there are to encourage community-oriented retail and in some cases, auto-related uses which are traditional on the avenue. Research and development uses, I guess, nothing would change. Research and development uses are currently not allowed in those nodes of the ground floor and nothing in these suggested changes would change that. and nothing in these suggested changes would change that.
Okay. Maling, I'm going to open it up for a public hearing. So, if I can have folks come to the mic. And can I see a shorthand if you are going to speak, even if you are not going to... I want you to stand up immediately, but... India, just give your name. Can you help me?
I'm on.
Okay, on. And then the timers on the screen.
Hi there, I'm Kirsten Warren. I'm the Director of Property Management with Wareham Development. We have properties in the Aquatic Park Research Campus. It's in West Berkeley, Ashby, Seventh Street, Potter Heinz area. Again, West Berkeley, and that's the MULI zoning district. And we have multiple properties there, approximately 80,000 square feet. And our concern is when we developed those properties, those buildings were approved and entitled using the commercial, physical, and biological laboratories, the laboratory definition that we've been talking about. And I really appreciate the staff's trying to think through the impacts to the businesses, so that's really appreciated. And where our concern is, is our buildings were entitled with the laboratory definition. And so, it's not really clear how that therefore impacts the entitlement component of this equation. And although the businesses, the existing businesses, wouldn't necessarily be impacted, which we greatly appreciate, because they're the ones performing the life sciences and important, and they're doing the research and development, that kind of stuff, that at whatever point in time they do leave, it does restrict our ability to then go out to the market to find those future tenants without us having to do the additional work, AUP, whatever, to then be able to get them back in. So, it's effectively made it harder for us to help create a more vibrant community in the West Berkeley area, to bring in... And if we can't lease the space, then it affects our ability to pay the gross receipts tax. So, we understand that that wasn't necessarily the intent of this effort. So, I just respectfully request that that component be addressed first before any formal changes are made. Thank you.
Should we have a three-minute break? Here's President of the District.
Do I have a more?
He said Wareham Properties.
Yeah, so, I mean, essentially, we really do appreciate the efforts, and we certainly understand the intent. And we also want to have a very vibrant West Berkeley area. We work really hard to have that for West Berkeley. We just don't want to have our ability diminished by the change in our ability because of this definition change and not necessarily realize, well, how does that impact how our building that was entitled based on that definition? How do we resolve that without having us to have to go through any changes, et cetera? So, that's what we really want to have considered before any formal changes are made. So, thank you, I appreciate your time and your attention to this. Thank you.
You can be there.
Zelda Bronstein. Zoning is a form of the police power which oversees public health and safety. Item 11 on the Planning Commission's July 17th agenda proposes an extraordinarily irresponsible exercise of that power. Currently, the Berkeley zoning ordinance prohibits commercial or physical or biological laboratories using Class III organisms in the mixed-use line industrial MULI district in West Berkeley. It allows the use of Class II organisms, BSL II labs, only in locations at least 500 feet from a residential district or an MUR, mixed-use residential district in West Berkeley. Proposed amendments would remove the regulation of biosafety-level BSL class organisms from the zoning ordinance and revise permit requirements from the various corridors that we've seen. Actually, we haven't seen them. There was no map on item 11. It's impossible for a regular person to tell where in the city exactly these things are proposed. All of these corridors abut residential districts. People would be working and living in close proximity to unregulated bio labs, where the businesses and residents in these districts notify about the proposed changes, and why does item 11 lack a map of those districts? The July 1 staff report said that the West Berkeley plan includes a policy to periodically review the city's regulation of biotechnology and assure that it both meets city regulatory objectives and does not unnecessarily interfere with the creation and expansion of biotech firms. And we saw a long list tonight, staff prepared, of all the different agencies that oversee different aspects of labs research. However, we have yet to be told whether such reviews actually have taken place, how often, and with what outcomes. There's nothing in the proposed changes about penalties in the event of negligence or mishap. The stated rationale for these changes is to keep Berkeley competitive with other cities. Pursuing market share does not justify exposing people to risky, unregulated research or testing. Please reject the staff proposal. Thank you.
Can I elevate this a little? My name is Bernard Marsler. I've been resident of Berkeley since 1984. There seems to be a basic misunderstanding here regarding terminology. Planning Department, first of all, in May, said there was only one Class III lab in California. That's a total error. This California Public Health has 17, three are enrichment. I don't think regulation means inspection or verification. The way the labs are regulated is simply that they have to follow certain procedures. Though if those procedures are followed exactly, it's not inspected. So, those regulations basically are nonsense unless there's inspection. Tell me where the inspection occurs. Inspection occurs when a lab makes a mistake, there's an error, or when a lab is notified in advance that it will be inspected so it can clean up its act, because of course inspectors don't want to get sick from a lab leak. Wuhan Lab was a BSL II lab in China. Oh, well, the Chinese didn't have proper inspection. Excuse me. Those inspections are this type of inspections we have in the United States. That is, they're nonexistent. Get smart here, please. You're dealing with people's lives. Do you want to live next to a... Do you want a citizen of Berkeley to open their kitchen window and then be exposed 10 feet away from a BSL II lab that's not inspected?
Any other public comments?
Should staff address, directly address their...
In that case, can we move to... Someone move to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Second?
I call the role to close the public hearing. Commissioner Merker.
Yes.
Commissioner Shear.
Yes.
Commissioner Ofield.
Yes.
Commissioner Mickleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Capitelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Twu.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Yes.
Chair Gosh.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I would like for each commissioner, for us to just go down and make any comments that you have or questions that you want to ask. If you want to uplift any of the comments, you're welcome to do that. To staff. Commissioner Ofield, would you like to start?
Sure, I can start. So, I feel like I'm not ready to vote on this tonight because I would like to see more data and analysis on actually if this set of proposed changes were really successful in attracting a lot more of these research and development businesses. Actually, what kind of impact would that have on tax revenues to the city? And I say that because I think a lot of the referral item from City Council and a lot of the other materials I read in the packet sort of implied to me that actually part of what we're trying to do here is to increase the tax base for the city of Berkeley. But if most of these businesses are based on... Are taxed based on their gross receipts, as I'm hearing from the staff tonight, then I'm actually not convinced that this is really going to bring a lot more tax revenue to the city because a lot of these research and development uses, as they've been described in the materials that have been presented to us, are actually businesses that don't have a lot of gross receipts, like tech startups that get venture capital, like the City Council worker talked about, like, oh, there's all these companies getting all this venture capital money. Well, a lot of those companies operate for years and years with like negative earnings. They spend tons of money developing their products before they actually have substantial revenues from their products. I just, I would like to see more information on this tax revenue topic to be persuaded that actually this is what we want to do. And I'm thinking if staff could actually do more analysis on that, maybe there could also be, if warranted... I don't know what the data and analysis would show, but if warranted, maybe we would actually want to adjust how some of these businesses are taxed so that it's, in view of gross receipts, it's based on gross payroll or some other metric. And I have no qualms with like legitimate public interest research projects that get grants from, you know, government or whatever, having some tax exemptions. I'm not saying that we need to like tax all of these research and development uses to the maximum extent, but I just, I want to get more information and be better persuaded that this is actually the right move in terms of kind of fair and justifiable tax revenues to the city. And another issue that I'm concerned about is... Let's, I'm not sure this is going to actually like be... If we pass something like what was proposed, so I'm not sure if it's really going to be a huge sea change for the city commercial business landscape. But let's say it was very successful or as reasonably successful as we could hope for in terms of attracting these kinds of businesses to Berkeley. I'm concerned about how that affects just housing supply and demand, and I haven't heard much discussion or analysis on that topic. Like, a lot of these types of businesses in particular tend to attract a lot of very highly educated people from all over the country and all over the world. And there's a lot of just like pros and cons and challenges and just, you know, a whole can of worms that we could get into with that. And like, how do we... And so, that sort of ties into my concern about like, is this actually really going to help increase our tax revenue base? Because maybe if we get a lot of extra tax revenue, we can use some of that to address our city's affordable housing goals. But if we're like attracting all these businesses that are going to, you know, have all of these, you know, jobs attracting people from everywhere, but we like don't have a way of like ensuring we're actually making progress on our affordable housing goals, then like, is this a net positive for the city of Berkeley? I don't know. So, I have more questions than answers, so I just feel like I'm not going to be ready to vote on this tonight.
And staff, is it okay if we go through and then you respond? That's okay?
Absolutely.
I'm going to use your next... I mean, if somebody's not ready, you can pass and we can come back, but...
Sure. Yeah, the tax revenue question is interesting. Just for my own information, like what is a gross receipt? Because I understand that we talked a little bit before about grants could count as a gross receipt, and so they're exempted. But then that just makes me wonder what else, what else besides like things, you know, money that is received in exchange for goods and services? Or if that is just the definition of gross receipts? So, that would be helpful. I do hope that we're able to move forward tonight without necessarily addressing every piece of the tax question. I think it's sort of separate from the zoning questions. So, yeah, but I do like the idea of revisiting how these businesses are taxed to make sure that there is broadly shared benefit besides just the network effects of having this.
Yep, okay. Yeah, again, also glad to sort of have the tax question brought up. And I think, again, it's not really the Planning Commission's place to work that part out. And I think it's good, though, to talk about it and to try to understand what the debate is about. For me, I feel ready to vote on it because we've, you know, we've heard it a couple times. I think, separate and apart from just the tax question, we can just sort of squint and look at what a real estate picture looks like when the real estate possibilities match what the market wants and what there is energy for. And it does create, I really believe it does create a lot of benefits for the city. I mean, we have things like leased buildings. We have new projects. We have people coming, we do have people, you know, coming to Berkeley or stay in Berkeley because they have, you know, good jobs. We have Berkeley generating innovation and really using what the university and ecosystem around it kind of is good for. So, I think, for me personally, I see the sort of knock-on effects on districts and on, you know, vibrancy, street life, occupancy as being kind of the primary benefit, actually, that I think about. It's like this question of sort of, well, if these spaces aren't all going to be occupied, you know, if all of San Pablo isn't going to be occupied by ground floor retail, you know, like we want housing, we want some, and we want some other things that the market is potentially willing to provide right now. So, I think for all those reasons, I hope we can vote on it tonight. I would be supportive of the staff's recommendations, basically, as presented tonight. I would appreciate staff addressing the comment from...
Kirsten.
Kirsten, thank you. Because in my understanding of how staff presented the solution, it would address the concern, but it sounds like the comment still implies there's unresolved concerns. So, I wonder if staff can kind of address that directly? Because, you know, would this be any different? Do the conditions of this ordinance... Does it create any different conditions for any other business turnover that would happen? Wouldn't a new business have to get a new permit anyway? Or is this creating something sort of a particular onus on having a business changeover? So, I don't know if now's a good time to address that, but if not...
I think we'll do it together, if that's okay.
Okay. That's all.
I agree, and I know that staff agrees, that they need to resolve the definition so that we retain the status as a legally permitted use for both existing businesses and new businesses. No new onerous burden there. I'm a little bit less of a free-market person in a small city. I do agree that we need to allow a liberalization of ground floor uses in a lot of places. But it doesn't need to be R and D. And in fact, as Commissioner Twu's letter to us points out, R and D comes with some risks because it is orders of magnitude, higher rents, land values, and it competes with other things we're trying to achieve like multifamily housing in the CT District, for example. So, I think we have to be thoughtful about it. Just to reassure everybody, there's something like 2 million square feet of R and D in the development pipeline right now. So, we don't actually have a crisis here. We have a little room to be thoughtful, and we won't be forwarding growth or kicking businesses out or any of that. There's no crisis. 2 million square feet is actually massive, and we all have helped that along with our discussion about Pacific Steel that we had a year and a half ago or so. So, we're okay. I was not at the last meeting, and the notes weren't closed. notes weren't clear, but I'm gonna assume that when people said they didn't think that the bio-risks needed to be addressed by the planning department, you weren't saying you didn't want the bio-risks addressed. You're not saying we, we don't want them to be regulated at all. So I think we should direct staff to explain, and I don't, I don't think they know the answer quite yet, um, how bio-risks will be prevented and mitigated by them or by other agencies, um, and how distance from sensitive uses will be maintained, including schools, residential, et cetera. I think we need to know that, um, before we move forward. Um, I think we should also consider excluding labs from ground floors, not in our struggling commercial districts like University Avenue, but definitely in CT, that's Telegraph, and in the downtown core, outer core and corridor. There's also a, a downtown buffer zone that I think has more flexibility. That's, for example, where the old um permitting center was on Center Street. And I think it would be fine to boost downtown with some of these uses, but we don't need to put retailers in direct competition with labs. That's it. Thank you.
All right, I have a lot to say. Let me give everyone some handouts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is anyone else in the public?
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
All right. So I did a lot of, I mean, I've started research into the potential outcomes of if we decide to really pursue R and D as a major land use in Berkeley. You know, historically, we've been mostly a university town, but not as much of a R and D place. And obviously, there are some benefits, like, we would allow some of the Berkeley businesses to stay and grow, bring in money, maybe not directly through the business license tax, but we could fix that, but also through property tax and sales tax, when people are working in these places, going to other businesses. Uh, but looking at how R and D has grown up around a lot of other universities around this country, this could be a really big change for our city, bigger than anything we've previously seen before, because of the number of high-paying jobs it could bring in. Uh, if you look at other R and D biotech clusters, whether it's places like South San Francisco, or Palo Alto, or Cambridge is probably the largest one, or San Diego, they have tens and thousands of people working in these research and development. And what I've found is that often these R and D businesses want to locate next to the universities, for the reasons that were brought up before by staff and other squares. They're working closely with scientists at the university. And so what that would mean for Berkeley is that a lot of these R and D uses would take over a lot of the downtown area, which we're trying to build housing in, because it's a very profitable use. And if you go to the second page, another difference between R and D and versus retail is the job density is a lot higher. A 20,000-square-foot R and D building, so just picture a building on the corner of a block, two stories, 100 feet by 100 feet, you could have 100 people working in there. And compare that to how much space you need for a 100-unit apartment building. I decided to really look into Cambridge as a point of comparison because they have a lot of things in common. We're similar-sized cities, they are geographically slightly smaller than us, both are built around major universities. The big difference is that they have a very large biotech hub, Kendall Square. And it has really shaped the development of their city. So if you go to the third page, there's a large R and D district that wraps around MIT, which is their main engineering and science university. And then, and you have a lot of mid and high-rise office and laboratory buildings in that area. And in order to have, even try to beat the housing demand, most of their commercial corridors and areas around transit have bid and high-rise housing. And most of the remainder of the city has what we call the middle housing, the, the standard housing type over there is what they call a triple-decker, which is three apartments, one on top of each other. Uh, but long story short is that if we do wanna pursue this path of making Berkeley open to R and D and becoming a R and D center, is that we're gonna need to make sure we have the ability to absorb that housing demand. And so I'd say the most important thing is that the R and D changes should not happen until after the middle housing is passed. So that there's somewhere for that housing demand to go. And that when we're looking at the corridor zoning updates for places like North Stadig, we're gonna need to be aiming a lot higher than what we previously thought. Because the alternative to the Cambridge model is the Palo Alto model, where they have the Stanford Industrial Park, which is basically a big R and D park, surrounded by single-family zoning, and houses are multiple millions of dollars. That is not what we want. We don't wanna be like Stanford for so many reasons. But, uh, we could look at Cambridge as an example, but I think we all should be very clear about what path we're going down if we do this R and D change.
Okay.
Are you, are you done?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. No, go ahead.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Um, I have a question about the restrictions that are listed from all these other agencies. And do, do any of those restrictions, um, apply to the location of the building? Like, if you're, do any of them say you can't be closer than 70 feet to a school or residential district or anything like that? Or are they purely safety, safety regulations on, um, for the entity itself? Or does someone say, well, in order to meet this standard, you have to be in a different location? So that's just a question about what is covered in the list of other regulations that, that we're supposed to. Um, the other question is if you have any information on inspection, inspection records? Uh, uh, that would also, I think, apply. So I'm, um, and also about the housing. My understanding is that Berkeley is not, um, comparable to a lot of other jurisdictions in that the number of workers who live here, this work hasn't balanced. They talk about that we need more, um, business for the folks who live here to work here and not have to drive. Uh, so there's another side to it that addresses, you know, are we providing jobs for someone new to move in? Or how many of those jobs could be taken over by people who already live? And I don't know what to answer, but there's probably some data somewhere. Um, so that's mainly it. And I, I also wanted to ask the question about ground floor. Right now, in the commercial district, it would be hard to put in an R and D facility on ground floor. It's just, you know, that's reserved primarily for housing or commercial. But not an R and D facility, you know, a commercial that is like, uh, public household services, where you, people can see in and out on that. Um, you're not gonna get that with an R and D facility. So it's, it's not clear to me that by adding this, um, making this allowed use in commercial districts, would, would mean that we have dead spaces in the first floor. I think that we might get a lot more, especially the smaller ones, on the second floor and the third floor, like the startups. But I don't see how that translates into, by adding it on the list of uses, that it automatically, um, may be put on the ground floor in the commercial districts. So there's, typically, there's residential and commercial, but this would not, uh, R and D is, is not a, it's not a commercial use. It doesn't have my, uh, so I'm not sure that it would be allowed on ground floor. So I think the concerns about having it, uh, the sort of dead space and not generate, um, traffic and pedestrian activity may be, in fear of something that's not allowed anyway. So I guess that's something I'd like staff to puzzle about, is when you add these, does that mean they're going to go into any commercial spaces at ground floor? But I think that's a separate definition, a separate use. Am I right? Is that, and maybe Clarice might.
Well, to follow on Debbie's comment, I think maybe one of the things we ought to consider is, uh, are the nodes and protecting the nodes. Uh, and I think, I was around when the node idea was passed, uh, a decade ago, maybe, maybe longer. Um, so, uh, because, because, uh, R and D is not gonna generate what traffic. It's not, although I think we're approaching the point where we have at least one cafe for every 10 people in the population, and some of those don't make it. I'm a little concerned, or the idea of going down the path of additional inspections or another layer of bureaucracy in terms of, um, uh, tracking these R and D facilities. I, I, uh, I was impressed with the list, but I was also depressed because I, how would you like to be a business owner and have to deal with 15, 20 different, um, agencies, you know, looking over your shoulder? Good that somebody looks over their shoulder. Uh, I think we have to keep in mind the, uh, auditor's report of, of maybe a month ago, talking about the failure of our public health department to inspect restaurants. And, and so until we've got that house in order, I certainly don't want to develop another layer of bureaucracy. Um, I, I think, uh, zoning ordinances are living documents. They're, they're a reflection of not only the past activities of the community, but they're also anticipating future activities. I remember thumbing through the zoning ordinance for Solano Avenue. Uh, this was maybe 10, 15 years ago. 15 years ago, you could, um, with a zoning certificate, you could open a livery stable. Uh, and that had been in the ordinance, I think it was written in 1948, 49, something like that. So in 1948, 49, we needed livery stables on Solano Avenue. And I actually would have picketed anyone who would have, you know, just decided to close it. So I, I, I think when we look at the activities today, the synergy between the university and the private sector is enormous. I don't think we should look at it, and I'd like to ask economic development. This isn't gonna be a tax windfall for the city in any way. Um, I, I would like to note, I think you mentioned 2 million square feet of R and D coming, coming on in the next probably year and a half to two years. Um, that, uh, that's gonna be an enormous windfall for the city, in terms of property taxes, grocery receipts taxes. Remember, when a building is rented, the business owner pays taxes on his grocery receipts. I sold 100 pounds of coffee today for $1,000. I'm gonna pay a 3% grocery receipts tax on that. I also paid rent to a property owner, perhaps, if I don't own the building myself. Those are grocery receipts for the property owner. So it's kind of a, a double win for, uh, the city in that sense. But I, I guess I, you know, my inclination is to move forward on this. I appreciate the idea of, of, uh, holding back on and refining the definition. The last thing we wanna do is go to, is go to business owners and say, oh, guess what? We changed the zoning ordinance. You're a non-conforming use now. That has all kinds of implications. If they, I'm not sure, if they wanna sell their business, let's say to someone else, um, and I come in, I'm the buyer, and I say, I wanna get a business license for 123 Elm Street, are you gonna give it to me if we don't pass this? Or, or, or is that use gonna die when the current owner leaves?
I think it runs for the land.
Well, I used to think of it running for the land, but.
But let's make sure we talk with staff or.
Okay. So maybe that's what, but I, I guess, I, I would like to move forward with this, carving out and reserving, uh, time for staff to come back in with a, uh, more focused and more assured definition of R and D so we don't, um, we don't inadvertently, uh, make people become existing non-conforming uses. And, and I think it would be pretty easy to protect the nodes from, uh, an impact of R and D merely by just not allowing them. And I would actually submit that as a friendly amendment. And that's it.
Thank you. Um, sort of went back to look at your, the presentation you did in May. I wasn't there for that meeting either. I think there were four commissioners here for both meetings, and the rest of us are reviewing some of this for the first time, which is not ideal, but I don't think staff should be, you know, punished is a strong word, but I don't think you all should have to be impacted by our inability to come to, to the two meetings, you know? So, so I, I just wanna make that comment for everybody here. I mean, we do have a charge as a commission, um, to stay informed as much as possible. Staff is there. If you wanna reach out to them about an agenda item to learn more. Um, and this is for the future, and this is also a note for myself personally, because I wasn't there for that meeting either. But I'm looking at the presentation, and I do have some questions, some of which sort of builds on what folks have already said here. Um, but I think, looking at your presentation, there's one thing that jumps out to me that what I'm looking at here is page number six of the presentation you did, which talks about vacancy rates. And one of the things that jumps out, it says the lab vacancy rate is 37.4%. And I'm trying to understand the relationship of that to the changes we're making. Like I said, the changes were ma- a- and, so I have two questions related to that. One is, is this definition one of the barriers for those, that vacancy rate? Um, because we, we're seeing that there's a ground floor commercial vacancy rate, which is 8%. So really, there's not, I don't think that much vacant space anyways, but the lab vacancy rate is pretty high. The office vacancy rate is 30%. So if you could explain what that relationship is between the lab vacancy rate and what we're doing today, if there is a relationship at all. Uh, the second thing is, would us doing this actually increase or decrease the amount of square footage available? For me, what I, what I'm understanding is kind of a shuffling, like, the amount of square footage or. footage or properties that would have fit, it would have fit under laboratory or this R and D and in these sort of two zoning areas. But are we effectively increasing the amount of square footage? Or are we just making it easier to access that square footage? That's the question. That, you know, like somebody looks at it and goes, we have the space available, but look at all these things I have to go through if I choose to go with this definition of the use. So that's my second question. The third question is, can you remind me what the 20,000 square foot footage zoning certificate versus above 20,000, where that number sort of comes from? And is it already an existing thing that we do? And we just try to keep that? And in terms of the, the BSL levels, I understand that the staff neither has the capacity or the expertise to do that. I think my only concern was when you cut out the BSL levels, and it goes back to Commissioner Sanderson's question of where does the regulation come from then about separation of uses? Like if we had this sort of 500 square foot distance for this level of BSL from residential, where is that being now addressed or covered? If that was, if that was a concern, it was real concern, it was a safety concern, is that kind of protection now being sourced from some other regulatory agency? I think that would be really helpful to know. Other than that, I mean, when I look at this, it's, it's very much as, and then, you know, to go back to the housing question, I, I appreciate Commissioner To bring this to us. I think it's a really important discussion that we as a city need to have about job and housing balance. At the same time, I think, like you mentioned, Eleanor, I used to, I used to have roommates who worked in labs. And over the pandemic as well, I have lots of friends who work in labs, and they were the only ones who were like, I still have to go into work, you know? Like I have to go in at 2:00 PM, my experiment is live. And if I'm not there, you know, all hell will break loose. So it is one of the, definitely one of the, I guess, professions or uses that are still actively bringing people into a place of work. And that has an impact on our businesses. So if people are coming in to work, to these places, they're going to the cafes, they're going to get lunch, they are creating a vibrant street life, all of those impacts, you know, we have that in a, for lab, a vacancy rate is 37%. That means those people aren't coming here. So, and I think the housing question is a valid one. I don't think we need to address it as part of this discussion, but we need to communicate that to council. Because we pass middle housing. So I think we pass middle housing. I'm happy with it. I think we can pass this, and then council can decide what they take first and what they take next. I don't think we need to tell council. I don't think we need to wait for what council is going to do. That being said, I think a lot of the folks who might end up working in these places are folks who come here as students, like somebody like me who came here and has to work at a firm on Fourth Street, which wasn't a lab, it was an architectural design. But, you know, I liked it, I liked it in Berkeley. It was already a big move for me as an immigrant, and I think many immigrants and H1B visas depend on these sort of STEM jobs that fortunately or unfortunately is the profile of many of our communities. So, so I think it's, I would be excited for more immigrants to have access to these kind of jobs and continue to, to live in our city, right? So it's not just new people, it's people who are already here, who are going to school here, who like it here, who appreciate our culture. We want them to stay, and I think that's why this is called keep innovation in Berkeley. It's not like bring innovation to Berkeley. It's already happening. How do we, by not having a clear definition, discourage those folks from, from continuing to live here? So, so that's where I'm at. So if you could, you know, answer some of the economic development type questions that came up as well, but also speak to the vacancy rate. And I'm not going to reiterate necessarily, but I think we already talked about that. Your new recommendation was already up there about you addressing the sort of change of views, or change of definition, how it affects existing businesses. Okay. Take a second. I think it's okay for you to take a second.
No, I, I think we can go for it. We talked a little bit about sort of how the city makes money in the general fund. So business license receipts, you know, I go, I pay, get, I want to do a livery stable, I'm going to pull my business license for doing that. These are my gross receipts. That is 8% of our general fund. Sales tax is even less. The bulk of the way, I mean, it's sad to me because those are the areas that our work should be reflecting bigger percentages, but that's just what it is. The property transfer tax is much larger than both of those things combined. So in terms of like, somebody pulling a business license for R and D, that's not where the economic impact is. It's in the knock on effects that we talked a little bit about, jobs, hiring, activity, people coming to the city, people working in a firm. Actually, it's interesting in some of the outreach for this work, we talked to the Fourth Street District that talked about wishing to have more R and D in this area because it brought a liveliness to the commercial district. This is somebody who's going out for a sandwich at lunch, getting a cup of coffee, maybe window shopping, maybe making a purchase, which leads to our sales tax receipts, and so on and so forth. So that's the piece about the city's general fund and the way business license tax funds it and sort of the slice of the pie, which is, for better or worse, slimmer than some of the other slices of the pie. The next thing I want to talk a little bit about was inventory and the vacancy rate. It's true, we did cover quite a bit of this in detail on May 1st. We do have new inventory coming online. It is, I wish it was 2 million square feet from the perspective of the Office of Economic Development, but it's not. We have 500,000 square feet at 600 Addison Street, the Berkeley Commons, that's right near Aquatic Park. That has not leased yet, so that is what, it's a great increase in vacant, in square footage. And then that is what's landing that vacancy rate so much higher. So I would say it's a moment in time. In fact, at least, you know, if that's absorbed, then that number will go down, but it is higher. So we're not, and then the Pacific Steel piece you're talking about is just shy of a million square feet. So it's not 2 million, it's a million, and it's not here yet.
In many districts, R and D that you get with an AUP is permitted on the ground floor, so those are regulations that currently exist. The nodes on San Pablo, R and D on ground floor is prohibited in those six nodes already, and that wouldn't change as a result of these, of these proposals. But there could be situations, you know, the idea is to encourage smaller R and D. So there could be more smaller R and D, and some of those could occupy ground floor absent any specific restrictions on that outside of the nodes.
Can I just clarify a question about the nodes? Basic question, university, it's only San Pablo that has nodes?
It only, it's only San Pablo that has nodes that regulate ground floor uses. The university does have nodes, but those speak more to how you can do residential. Within the nodes along university, residential must be included in a mixed use project. So the nodes, where are you saying, no standalone residential in the nodes on university. But on, on San Pablo and the CW, ground floor uses are regulated within the nodes. Now I have some maps of the nodes if you want to see.
So that, because that relates to residential on university, it wouldn't require a mixed, it wouldn't require a mixed use component for R and D if they rack up a node?
Right. So it's, it's essentially within the nodes you have that ground floor.
But not, but not for R and D on university?
Right. It only, it's only regulated residential projects.
Only regulated?
Only residential projects. On, on university, say, if you're going to do a residential project, it can't be residential only in the nodes. We want the nodes to have, you know, ground floor commercial, so you got to include commercial on the ground floor. But if you're just doing a commercial only project, there's no difference between the nodes on university.
Could you just clarify that? So on university, where it requires a mixed use type of housing, could an R and D facility be considered a commercial use on ground floor?
Yes. Term as well.
I think there was a question about the 20,000 square foot. That's ported over from the M district.
Yeah, in the M districts, the threshold for R and D is 20,000 square feet between CC and AUP.
Good. I feel like AUP is the correct standard for new construction, but this may not matter because you've probably never seen a lab application for less than 20,000 square feet, right? I mean, that would just be, nobody would build a new building of that size. What's that? Yeah, but they wouldn't, sort of, they're going to build their own facility. Yeah. I'm just wondering, because there is advantage to having an AUP, and it just means you have human eyes on it instead of just a checklist. And it might be for something as simple, like there's a park throughout on the ground floor, and staff wants to say, don't put it so close to the intersection, it's unsafe. So, and it's not a big deal. I think when we're talking about new construction, we're talking about a professional developer. This is not an owner sit-down, this is not scary, this is not a big deal at all. And what we're talking about is zoning certificate, the person we're really trying to serve is the business owner who has no experience. So why don't we just exclude new development from the zoning certificate standard? Just let it be AUP like it is now?
So you're proposing the change of use could, could be, change the use in the ground floor, but if it's a new construction, then you're going to AUP?
Separate issue, I'm saying wherever we allow R and D, if it's new construction, let the standard remain AUP.
So, okay. I think my, what I, I understand your intent. I think what I struggle with is, let me say new construction, if somebody kept a part of the building, or was forced to keep a part of the building because it was a historic facade, or, you know, whatever, then is it still new construction? And secondly, I think we should be encouraging better newer construction, better technologies, and why would we penalize somebody for wanting to build a better building and a more modern construction? And encourage people to keep some of, I mean, this is my argument with housing, is there are many reasons to build housing, and one of it is renewing the stock of our buildings and making them more modern and making them more environmentally safe. So why, why would we use this as a tool to force people to stay in buildings that may not work for them just because of a process?
That's actually, we should make a distinction here. I'm not talking about tenant improvements. I'm not talking about somebody who's going to remodel an existing building to make it work for their business. I'm talking about an actual brand new from the ground up building, which is not done by somebody who runs a lab, it's done by a developer, and it's not numerous.
I, I just want to confirm, an AUP, if appealed by one person, requires a public hearing?
Yeah.
Is that the case?
What is the, yeah.
An AUP, the, the, it's, please, wait. So, yeah, the AUP is reviewed and acted on by the ZOMA office. It's appealable, it's a.
And how long does that process take?
There's some variability on that. I'm working on an appeal right now, related to this particular type of use. And that initial application filing occurred in March of 2023, and we're taking it to council in two weeks.
So you're.
A little over a year.
I, I just, I think that, that would be a, that would be a real discouraging barrier for people to deal with. I think of the WeWorks building, which was not economically feasible. Same developer has lost a lot of money. They don't always make money, sometimes they lose. And to, and, and there are, I think, community members who, for whatever reason, are opposed to R and D. And what does it cost to file an appeal? 60 bucks, 50 bucks?
500 at that.
500? Thank you. Nice to see you. So maybe four or five people cobble together 500 bucks, file an appeal, knowing that for certain, they're at least a year out from getting entitlements. And there are methods to extend that even beyond a year. And I, and I wanted, as an example, and this is, this is a restaurant, not an R and D. A restaurant went to our staff and wanted to open up on Solano Avenue, and they said, how long will it, you know, how long will it take? And our staff informed them it would be a year. They went to the city of Albany and said, we want to open up a restaurant, and how long will it take us? And they said, we can have you out of here in six weeks. So we have to keep that in mind. This was a, not quite a mom and pop business, but if we're talking about a developer building 20,000 square feet of R and D, I'm going to call it R and D, WeWorks, I think we want to encourage that.
Good.
I have only one reservation left about, about this basically, which is actually, as I kind of listen to the comments, is the node, the nodes or the lack of nodes being issued in the ground floor, if you take Commissioner To's sort of, you know, maximal position on what like, you know, R and D, if there's just a flood of it, if that happens. I think the housing issue is one thing, let's set that aside, but the, I think the unintended consequence that I would not want to see for Berkeley is a kind of, you know, Kendall Square or, you know, South San Francisco realization of like downtown, you know, this kind of like glassy fronts, lobby every, you know, 200 feet.
No street traffic.
No, well, there'd be people coming in and out, you know, they get their sandwiches, but, you know, we, I think, I think we all want this, we're hoping that this proposal will actually help urbanism, it'll help street life, it'll help the vibrancy of the city and all the kind of like agglomeration effects that happen just when there's, there's economic activity happening, which has just a knock on effects for other businesses. So I, I do worry a little bit about that, sort of regardless of whether 20,000 foot projects are going to happen or not. So I wonder if it's something that we really care about, and we have this node sort of safety on San Pablo, if we wouldn't consider something like that for other corridors that we also want that to happen. I'm thinking, you know, particularly of university, it's sort of the, the thing that I hope that like 50 years will really connect one side of the city to the other, right? So I would, not, not that I really think this is going to happen, but I wouldn't want to see just this like, it become, I mean, I don't know, maybe this is sort of feasible, it become this corridor between the university and the R and D hub that's already at the West End, and it just becomes like a barbell with a heavy glassy handle. So I'm, I'm kind of feeling out there for, you know, is there, is there anything that we would care enough about maybe to add as language about protecting the ground floor, say, university in the same way that we, we would, the residential projects would happen, have some kind of like activating ground floor? And then, and then I think certainly downtown, in the, in the, in the downtown core, I just can't imagine that we would want, it's probably not going to happen, but I think we would definitely not want a wall of ground floor R and D. For me, that's kind of the only, I mean, I think everything else is kind of like, there are things we can tweak about it, but also there's a ton of thought that's gone into this, and I kind of, I think we should sort of move this to council and keep it, keep it going.
I wouldn't mind asking, I mean, I think I brought this up as well, as like, if we want this to actually be legal in terms of impact, and again, we're not, it's not like things are going to show up the next day for any of this. This is just, just like middle housing, we're just preparing the ground, and that often might take still years and decades because that's not the only course. But even, even though this is our job, we don't want to be a barrier. I think zoning doesn't want to be a barrier, but also we don't control anything else, really. So, you know, we shouldn't upsell or short sell what we're doing here. But I think try to be as precise as possible about what our charge is today, which is to simplify the definition, which is unnecessarily getting in the way of properties that already do this, and hope that that results in a more vibrant city and less frustrated people. vibrant city and less frustrated people. All right? Uh, yeah. And however, I do want to ask, you know, if, if all our dreams come true, which is lots of jobs, and, you know, I think the R&amp;D, when I look at this presentation, I think we all, when we say R&amp;D, again, because of the lack of definitions, everybody has an idea in their head about what, what it means, and we went through this before as well, right? With, is it test tubes, is it a 3D printer, is it just a computer? All of that now research just looks so different today than it did before. Manufacturing just looks so different today than it did then, right? And I think that is what we don't have a full understanding of, who is going to use these spaces, right? Like, below 20,000, like, do we have, I think that's what I would have liked to have seen, like, what kind of exists in terms of which research spaces will want to be on the ground floor, and so close to the public, I feel like most people doing research would actually want to be away from a lot of, for traffic just outside their lab, for whatever security reasons, or, so I don't have an understanding of that. So I want to understand, how much of a problem is it, how much demand is there for ground floor R&amp;D, for them to compete with? And as we know, you know, even restaurants, I think that's why we made it easier for food services, and we did that, even though it doesn't bring us as much tax revenue, honestly, but it's about the health of our city, and what we want to promote, and it can reduce the frustration of people who are trying to make a living in our city, right? So, can you talk a little bit about your experience so far, about who wants these, like, how much is it a real concern? And I think related to that, Justin, we had a short conversation about this, is what I would love to see, if it tends, if it happens to be on the ground floor, is some way for the public to access that research, or to access that community, or to access the work, or understand the work that's happening in your neighborhood, and it's not just this fortress, right? Like, how do we build, like, bring young people for field trips, do science, you know? How do we do that? Because when I look at some of the projects and examples that you've listed here, they're quite, quite broad in terms of what can happen. So can you speak to that, and is there a way, then, to address the sort of organism issue that I think we're all struggling with, because we have one idea of what R&amp;D might look like?
I can share a little bit about some of the companies we talked a little bit about in more detail on the May 1st presentation as a planning commission. I'm thinking, for example, of a company like Squishy Robotics. They started with a professor, they worked with 3D printers to build a device that when there's a fire, or hazardous spill, or something like that, instead of sending a first responder to it, this device can get there quickly, assess what's in the air, what's on the ground, what the risks are, bring that data back quickly, and so the targeted first responder response can be better deployed. You know, do the, do the fire people need to have different masks on to enter this space, that sort of thing? That's the kind of work Squishy Robotics does. They have really interesting devices, and for, to speak to your point about accessibility, another function in my office is completely separate than what we're discussing tonight, like the details of zoning, but we work a lot with Cal State East Bay and Berkeley High School about leading tours to bridge the sort of talent pipeline that we have growing. Right here at Berkeley High School, our state-winning robotics competition, to have them tour places like Squishy Robotics and Channing Tree Copper Labs, we talked about them a little bit, with electrification and new kinds of stoves that don't use natural gas, that sort of stuff that's being developed, right? It researched and developed, right, here in Berkeley. So accessibility of the research is there. That group doesn't need a huge amount of square feet, but they absolutely need the accessibility and the closeness to their mentor professor at the university, which means for them, they will be looking in the downtown, or they'd be looking in Telegraph, or they'd be looking in Shattuck to find a smaller office space. I can't speak to ground floor or not, I think second floor, you know, an address that is in walking distance, is what they're scanning the code for, and they're saying, "Oh, am I permitted here? Is it a, is it a six weeks, or is it 18 months?" And one thing that we have definitely observed, small businesses, whether they're entrepreneurs, or innovators, or both of those things, really value is certainty and predictability in a process, because if they can't have predictability with either time or costs, that absolutely influences where their business goes. Does that answer some of your questions? We can certainly go through a lot more, like, the Macular Degeneration folks, there's a number of other companies, and be happy to talk about that in more detail, but I don't know how long our attention spans are. That seemed to generate more questions, so.
Yeah. I think, Justin, you had something to say, and then I'll bring it back.
Again, I just wanted to speak to Commissioner McIntyre's point, and I often have to remind myself of this as well. These permit requirements are related to the use. There still exist additional permit requirements whenever you want to add more floor area, either through an addition, or through the construction of a new building, in any commercial district. For example, and I can't believe this in many cases, in the CNS district, a new building that's 2,000 square feet or more requires a use permit and a public hearing, right? Also requires, also requires going to design review, any project that's located in a C district. And maybe the planning commission wants to take a look at these regulations, I wouldn't be against it, but they, they do continue to exist now. In the Telegraph Commercial District, any new construct, any new floor area, an addition, or a new building that's over 1,500 square feet, requires a use permit and a public hearing. So when you're talking about new construction, there's a, there's a mountain of, it's addressed in our regulatory procedures. And so for, I think, for the streamlining that we're talking about today, we really are talking about tenant improvements and tenants in existing buildings.
And I just wanted to add one more thing, when you were painting that picture, Commissioner Murgrave, downtown and a wall of glass, right now in downtown, we have a wall of vacancy, and there's a absence of street life, and I was just in a meeting with a lot of companies that are starting here in Berkeley, that are spinning out of the university, the UC Skydeck, where those students are not feeling safe, they physically safe in our city, and there is a lot of concern about needing to leave, and that is so hard to hear, when all we have is space, and an incredible location, and the talent, and it's, I feel like it's almost incumbent on us to do our level best to make our regulations more simple, to allow these companies that are tackling our greatest challenges through their innovation, like climate change, and all kinds of medical threats. We've certainly just been through a pandemic, the speed at which the science can move was really tremendous. And so enabling those groups to stay here is really important to the sort of health and vibrancy of our city, I mean, across all economic sectors, but specifically this one.
Yeah, I think one of the things I noticed is, you know, the businesses having to relocate because of the new housing on Central Street, many of them just moved into the, you know, onto Shattuck, and I think Shattuck's looking better now, which is, which is interesting. I hope we get, like, more businesses than, like, Cafe Rios on University Avenue, like, all these vacant spaces suddenly have, you know, the two blocks on board, suddenly those, you know, three of the businesses go there. So it's been interesting.
I'm proud to, I'm sorry, this is not exactly the topic, but all those businesses worked closely with our office.
Yeah.
To find a new space in Berkeley. The ones that already had a plan executed it, the ones that were kind of ready to do something different were able to do that, but the, I, the, the projects to be committed for their work on that, to really make sure that there was a place for those places to stay.
Commissioner, a sec. I forgot what I was going to ask, just don't forget it.
I mean, I'm ready for us to, do any final comments. I'm going to go here, then Capitelli.
So I just want to, again, make, make sure I understand. As far as revising permit requirements, the way that we expect this to be used is not that somebody is going to build a freshly new building under 20,000 square feet that will be meant for R&amp;D, it's that an existing building's under 20,000 square feet will take on a new use for R&amp;D. And that is what the zoning certificate is for. That's the sort of intention, the expectation.
Because in the commercial districts, building something new of any kind has its own permit requirements, the physical building has permit requirements, and the use has permit requirements. If we're just suggesting revisions to the use permit requirements, the permits related to the physical structure will still be in place for better.
Very helpful, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we first direct staff to describe how bio-risks will be mitigated by them or other agencies, and that we direct them to resolve the definition to retain the status as legally permitted use for existing businesses and for new businesses like them, and that we.
Sorry, staff, are you writing this down?
And we ask them to exclude labs from the ground floor in CT and the core DMU, core outer core corridor, but to allow them in those areas in upper floors, and to bring it back here soon.
This is really the effect, was the bringing it back here soon to PC?
Yeah, I think we'll get it done, I think we all agree, it's cool, worthwhile, helpful to support other businesses. We should just be confident and thorough.
Can someone repeat your motion? So, can you repeat it?
Yeah.
I don't have it all straight.
Um, to direct staff to describe how bio-risks will be mitigated by themselves or by other existing agencies, to resolve the definition issue for existing businesses and facilities and new, so that they are legally permitted, and to propose some mechanism for directing labs away from the ground floors in Telegraph, Downtown Core, Outer Core and Corridor. I'm open to a friendly amendment about any area other than mentioning University Avenue, but that's the motion. And to bring it back here soon.
Can?
Is there a second for them? We have, there's a second to discuss. Not seeing a second, so I'm gonna not go there. So, yeah, any other?
Well, my, I mean, my main comment is, I don't, I don't know that it needs to come back here to, to, to planning commission, that wasn't the, that's not staff's recommendation, was it? Yeah, so I guess supportive of it, I think.
It's already, you don't have to discuss it anymore, but I hear what. So, Commissioner Capitelli, did you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like, well, I'd like to make a similar motion, meaning, I was going to suggest them a friendly amendments, but to move the staff recommendations to amend their proposal to protect or to prohibit R&amp;D on the ground floor in the existing nodes, and to come back with recommendations for nodes on university and Shattuck outside of the downtown. The only one I can think of is North, well, I won't be here, so I won't have to worry about that.
Well, I, again, I'm going to encourage folks to just think through whether you're going to begin, like, what we're setting up, you know, it's gone through a process, so please sort of think more carefully about what we're recommending, and the work staff has done, and let's build on the work, rather than use this as a way to review the entire.
Well, I'll stay with, I'll stay with my motion and hope for a second.
You, you would have to repeat it.
Can I repeat it? Okay. I would like to move the staff recommendations, carving out the R&amp;D definition, bringing it back so that we do not inadvertently make an existing business an illegal business, or a non-conforming business.
Well, sorry. Can you, that's already in the staff recommendation, it's already been addressed. So can we have the staff recommendation projected?
And I, and I'd like this, my motion would include moving it on to the council after the staff has.
Resolved.
Resolved that, that issue.
So that's, yeah, at least that we have to turn up the lights, we need to get it projected. Can we look at the staff recommendation?
And I also want to add to my motion prohibiting R&amp;D ground floor in the existing nodes, and have staff explore appropriate areas on university and Shattuck that should be designated as knowns.
It's already prohibited in, sorry, it's already, okay. Does anybody want a second?
Well, I'd make it, so, I make a friendly, do you have a second?
Give a second before you can make a friendly amendment. You can also make your, okay.
Okay. So friendly amendment to, I think the language to explore is, I'm just uncomfortable with having this potentially have to come back for, you know, another read, so I think the language of explore, but I would, I would add, in the, in the, in the downtown core, did you have that in yours?
Could they be prohibited from?
Yeah, to explore, to explore limitations on, including the downtown core, and, and, yeah. Telegraph.
This is a suggestion.
I ran a question on what you proposed. When you guys say, "Have staff go investigate", are you intending then to come back to the planning commission with your results, and then take it to council, or are you suggesting that they make changes in the proposal after they've done the investigation, but not come back?
I think if we, if we can just have staff just make, make recommendations, I would say, you know, take it back to council as it is, basically with staff, the staff recommended action for today. And with, with some discussion to inform council when they look at it about what mechanisms you could use to limit, limit R&amp;D in nodes.
Or discard, or discard.
On important corridors. I mean, I, I'm pretty convinced by actually the argument that there's already a lot of other processes in place to limit bad design. So I don't want to, I don't think we know enough, or it's not the right form to, like, make it into this, this motion, but just to have it as something that council can discuss.
Also, I would like to make a friendly amendment to not say prohibited nodes, because that's already in there. So that's just, let's not say prohibit something that's already prohibited, if that's a mandatory.
Is that, R&amp;D is not, is prohibited, prohibited in existing?
On the ground floor, in the existing nodes on San Pablo.
It's already prohibited, that's what we're saying.
I guess I wanted to cover, reach out and cover university downtown.
There are no designated nodes there. So I think what we're asking, what I'm hearing here is how do we designate nodes or other, other ways of describing this? I'll come to you, Commissioner Twos, unless you're going to help?
Yeah, honest to you. I think for the, the University Avenue strategic plan already has it.
No, which strategic plan?
So, on that, we can already, for University Avenue, we can already add those nodes, and then for downtown, it could be the.
Just say the downtown core.
The downtown core and the outer core. Is that what you're thinking of?
I'm following.
Do the.
I, I wonder if it's feasible to sort of soften it a little bit. These are big, big buildings, right? Wide and, and deep buildings. I understand we, we want vibrant storefronts, right? But.
And if you can maybe allow me to back the building, but not the front.
Something along those lines.
I think we have something for Solano Avenue like that, that says the first 20 or 30 feet has to be. I think we have something for Solano Avenue like that that says the first 20 or 30 feet has to be activated in some way. I can't remember the exact wording.
Yeah, the south side zoning changes that we just recently did is the depth, we sort of, we consider the active commercial frontage and then we allow residential behind the buildings. So we can use the same standard.
I feel like we're, I, I feel like we do this every time where we are trying to be nuanced, conscientious, but it also feels like it's just on the fly that we're throwing stuff at staff, like, do this on this part and do this in this part. And there's not a coherency in giving staff that kind of direction. So I, I would recommend that we send the staff recommendation, but send it with things that council should consider doing as an overlay on top of this, which is considering the housing jobs balance and whether we can do mixed use with housing and lab like they do in the example you gave. But you need to do some more work. Staff needs to do a little bit more work on that when this goes to council. The second thing is understanding how, how we have the sort of designated nodes, like which of those nodes will not have R and D because I think the University Avenue nodes don't, don't do exactly what we're thinking. Because it's only for mixed use housing. Mixed use housing in those nodes, you don't allow ground floor R and D. But other mixed use buildings can't have ground floor R and D. Correct?
Right, currently there's no limitation on where you can put R and D in the, along University Avenue.
And, and the way we're preserving this vibrancy is by having the mixed use housing not have R and D. So there's already like a plan there. And I think what we don't understand is what that balance looks like. What is that street front, frontage gonna look like? We don't know that. And so we would have to come up with some like percentage of how much we want this to not have R and D, like, yeah.
I mean, I think as far as the suggestions that identify sort of already existing delineations like the CW nodes, the CU nodes, the sub areas within the CDMU, I think that's helpful. I think we would want a little bit more guidance if we were gonna create new sub areas in Shattuck, for example. You know, in the staff report template, the things that go to the city council, there's a, there's a section that says alternative actions considered. So we usually always summarize some of the other things that were under discussion. And that is an area that we could include discussion on these topics. I think from our perspective, we would like to get some direction, I think, with respect to the nodes on CW and CU. I'm gathering it's clear that there's a concern that we may be killing the ground floor by, by putting, you know, R and D as an active frontage. And so there was some thought on the, on the planning commission of trying to limit that. Here's some alternative language that staff has put together that may meet that, that intent. In fact, I feel like we could say that. The Shattuck one is a little bit, I just don't know, I, I don't know if we have enough direction from what you said to like, say like where, where would we be thinking that R and D would be bad without, if you, without some direction?
You're talking about whether it should be allowed on the ground floor frontage?
Right, or not, on, yeah, on Shattuck outside of the core.
I think it's, can I make a suggestion that's, um, only using what's current, already been designated as a node? And downtown area is gonna be a big pull, but we desperately need to protect pedestrian activity there. So the list you gave of the nodes plus the downtown, uh, for council to consider prohibiting ground floor use, R and D use, ground floor use in those areas. To me, that gets at biggest land use issue that, that we're currently facing. It's a pretty straightforward one. Can you do it on the ground floor or not? Well, you can here, but as the council would consider not allowing designated nodes in the downtown.
Or you could also just direct us to do that. That's part of your recommendation.
Can I ask what I just said?
Oh, no, not to, not to, not to, not to put forward, but we just put forward and say, oh, you could consider this, but we could actually Do it. Right? Get into it.
That's correct. So can I do a temperature check on that from economic development about if we excluded R and D in, in downtown as a ground floor use, do you see that being a hindrance?
Yes, I think that would absolutely run counter to what we're trying to accomplish.
And there are ground floor offices already. I, I think that's what I'm struggling with is not, not understanding the balancing, what we're trying to open up versus...
Well, if I could suggest we not put restrictions in there that we don't really know what the consequences would be. And prohibiting R and D on ground floor uses in the downtown could be a very different impact than doing it on San Pablo. So I guess I'm reluctant to add new restrictions where we don't really have, I mean, they just popped up, you know, and we're thinking about it for the first time that we shouldn't go that way. I think we should take the, the staff recommendation for, they're doing additional research on the conflict on legal nonconforming and conforming. And if we want to suggest that they consider prohibiting it on ground floor, that would require the staff do a thorough research before they can put that in a council item.
Yeah, I just wanna say, since I, since I've been picking at this idea and so I'm promoting it, I mean, I, I agree. I feel like I'm, I'm changing how I feel about it because I think we're using the wrong tool for the problem right now. This isn't a zoning problem. It's a, it's an urban design and standards problem. There's a lot of ways to sophisticatedly weave in different ground floor uses and have lobbies and stuff. I just don't know that we can do this in an evening zoning. So I, I'd sort of prefer maybe taking back what I said. Passage is clean as it is, but maybe, I mean, there's two issues. There's Commissioner Two's issue around housing, which is I think a big gnarly question to pose, and maybe this issue around the urban design of how it gets executed. And somehow we can, you know, I don't know if it, if it makes sense to include that just in a letter, you know, with sending this back to council or what would be the right way to do it, but just to identify that that was, these are two key issues that we thought were important enough to be addressed in some way going forward.
Now, all I'm really looking for is that whatever we send to council includes the recommendation that middle housing is passed before the key innovation.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean, honestly, it could go either way, right? I mean, if you pass this, then that informs middle housing. If you pass middle housing, it informs this. So everything informs each other.
But we don't have to solve all of those problems now.
I, I think that's...
So if we certainly...
I'm, I'm fine with putting that as a recommendation, but I think what I'm gonna ask staff is, do you have your hand up?
I just, I, I said my piece about the tax revenues and I, I still am concerned that we charge, like, you know, retail businesses, restaurants, et cetera, taxes based on gross receipts and that makes sense. But I just, I'm concerned a lot of these R and D businesses are not bringing, going to bring the tax revenue that I think some people in this room or some people who authored this city council referral are maybe like imagining or thinking. And I could be wrong about this, but I haven't seen them succeed, unintended. But I, I, I wanted to chime in also about this ground floor retail issue because I didn't comment on that yet. But that was actually my other major concern about this proposal coming in. It's like I don't want, like, you know, big research companies that can get, you know, big grants or big venture capital investments, like competing for ground floor retail with like, you know, restaurants or other things like that that we want to promote. And that may seem kind of like a laughable concern in, in this economic environment where like now we have, we have a lot of storefront vacancies, but I think that could change faster than we in our city process are able to change the zoning code. And so I wanna make sure we're being protective. We are very slow at changing the zoning code. The economy can change very, very fast. And I'm not just concerned about restaurants, but I'm concerned about like food manufacturing, like food and beverage craft and all kinds of things that we have in West Berkeley. And so I just, it, it's sort of, it's sort of this ground floor retail and impacts on other kinds of businesses that are more sort of like local craft businesses that do contribute to the tax base. And they may not be like new and shiny, but I think they're really important parts of our local economy. So I do feel like this, this kind of storefront question is really like a big, a big issue for me that's still unresolved with this proposal as well.
So do we have a pending motion?
So we do, and I think, I think we should move on it because I hope staff that are taking notes about all of these concerns because every time we discuss something, we all discuss everything. But of course, what we're discussing is not the tool to solve it with, as you reminded us, but we shouldn't forget. We do have a expertise. We do have other things in place that we can't always
And sometimes you just need to...
But I, I would...
And then look at how it works and change it, you know?
I think where we do have the nodes, I'm comfortable saying where we do have nodes that we don't have R and D. So wherever we have nodes in, in these zones that we don't have R and D.
On the ground floor.
On the ground floor, yeah. I'm comfortable taking it up to there. And then with downtown, I don't know. And I, I feel like it should be stated as a, that we need some kind of way to figure that out, whether it's a downtown plan or a design review or things like that for us to figure it out. But I don't think we should let that stop, stop how we're moving.
And so those nodes would be University and San Pablo?
Yes. I think it's University and San Pablo, is that correct?
Yes, although in San Pablo, those, it's already created on the ground floor.
The, the nodes on University are not necessarily where you would expect businesses to be. So like the corner of Sacramento and University is not a node. You go down two streets and it is a node because it was addressing residential issues, not commercial issues. So I think we're getting it too confused and too many ideas out that we don't know. So I, I, I almost like your suggestion, but I would say take the, the, the staff's recommendation, which, and not add more restrictions on ground floor uses. And that they can take up the issue with the conforming, nonconforming. They can put in what they think is right in the, in the report that goes to the council. And if there's more concern about ground floor uses, that that be something that will be, I would say, handled at a different time. Because I think we have to see, we don't even know what these things are. We don't know what they look like. We don't know, I mean, I think we're, we're treating fear as a fact and it may not come to that. And we have plenty of time to evaluate. Let's start with something, not add additional restrictions and see how it goes and, you know, come back and tweak it. We need to.
Yeah, I still wanna know where the nodes are at University. Do they, would they make sense to this?
I think, is that, we have a motion. Is that on the...
Yes, you do. Yeah, yeah.
Was that a replacement motion?
Or, or you can ask Lori for a friendly amendment, or you can make a substitute motion, but please do something.
Okay, I wanna make a substitute motion that we approve staff recommended, staff recommendations including their, they'll time to explore the legal nonconforming use issue into the cer, into the report that goes to the council and what they think is best. And then if they want to, but we make no more restrictions on ground floor use or any of that. We just take it with this additional...
That's an explanation, not a motion. So just make a motion.
Okay, so the motion is approve the staff recommendation, which includes the legal nonconform and conforming stuff, and send it to council that way. And if, and you maybe include, no, I don't, you wanna go ahead?
That's it. You're done. You're done. That's the motion. Anybody want a second?
I'll, I'll second, can I second with a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Second with a friendly amendment to direct staff to explicitly address the, the cri, what, what criteria could be best used to ensure ground floor vibrancy?
If that would be...
Or, or, or what, what planning, what, what existing planning overlays, I guess? What plant districts can be, can be used as mechanisms to ensure?
I, I would not accept that.
How about, how about like an impact, impact study of ground floor usage, lab usage on commercial businesses?
We have to wait until it's allowed before we can study it.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Wait for it to be allowed. So two years from now, someone might study it. I mean, I think a future study...
Well, they can do case studies of other places where there is ground floor.
All right, I'm fine. I'll sec, I'll second it without any...
You were removing it.
I both amended to recommend to council that they take up the middle housing support, they take up key innovation.
I'm sorry.
How is that related? Why?
Well, this will create lots of jobs and need somewhere for people to live. I don't want us to end up in the Palo Alto situation where we pick up the labs and...
But that's not on the agenda for tonight.
No, well...
It's, it's not so much about ordering, right? It's that we, you're saying they should, they should do this.
Right.
But only if they're going to do.
Right, it's a worry about how we enter demolition ordinance where demolition ordinance like to council before middle housing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not even gonna go into how messed up the order of things is and what comes first and what comes second. And then things should be discussed together. I mean, honestly, some things should be discussed together. So I don't wanna say order. Is there another way we can put it, Commissioner Two, where it's not so much about the order, but to consider that, because when they get this, only they get it before middle housing does that common, right?
Right, yeah.
Otherwise it doesn't, right?
What I don't wanna...
But, but on Tuesday, so I mean, it's...
What, what I'm trying to avoid is a situation where the council doesn't take action on Tuesday, kicks it off in the next year because they're certainly not gonna take it up.
I almost feel like we should send this to them first so they understand the economic development of the city before they make a decision about housing. I mean, so I, I don't feel like the order makes sense to me.
I absolutely get your concern, but I just urge you to let it go because really all they're doing is changing the permit level. We're not wildly impacting the amount of R and D that's going to happen. I don't think it's gonna be measurable. And given what's already in the pipeline, I, I don't think it's gonna tweak the housing demand that much at, at all.
If it wasn't measurable, we wouldn't be doing this.
But can, can we say, can we say that council should consider the impact on housing?
I...
Availability.
So I, I would not accept...
You can reject...
I can reject that because I don't think that if you put that in, then there's gonna be delay while they go and study the impact on housing. And I don't know how you would do that.
Right, that's probably preferred option of sequencing rather than study because I feel that might actually speed things up.
I, I, I really, I really worry honestly that that introduces another reason for those who might wanna delay a vote on middle housing to vote no or find a reason to delay. And I, I think it might have, have an unintended effect that it would, it would complicate, it would sort of complicate the waters a little bit.
Okay, I think we have given everybody a lot of space to express yourselves. And I think, I think we should vote.
Call the question.
And, but, but I hope staff is like, listen to us and listen to the concerns and that you... and that you express these concerns, because we can only do so much, but council can do more if they are similarly concerned. They actually have the power to give you a referral, to study any of these further. So, uh, but as commission and what our task is today, I feel like we've...
So...
Done it.
So my version is still on the table?
Yeah.
Could staff repeat the motion before we go? I had approved staff's recommendation.
Speak up.
Did you want me to do? You're the secretary.
Yeah. Um, I have the motion as approve the staff recommendation.
Including legal nonconforming issue.
Which is in the staff recommendation.
Which is in the staff recommendation, that we resolve it before it goes to council. Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ofield?
No.
Commissioner Mikketan?
Epstein.
Commissioner Capitelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Twue?
Epstein.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Goach?
Yes.
Motion asked.
Also, now I have all these questions, but what, what feedback did commissioners give you last time? Because, you know, when it comes back to us a second time, it should be easier. Like, some of these comments felt very first time, so I would encourage us to bring our comments to staff sooner rather than later.
So that was your last item on the agenda?
Can we adjourn?
But it may, yes, you can. Second, tweeting to the row?
Uh, Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ofield?
Yes.
Commissioner Mikketan?
Yep.
Commissioner Capitelli? Commissioner Twue?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Goach?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.